Good evening. As soon as the Vice Chairman has a seat, we'll start the meeting. I bet you were, yeah. I'm calling order the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting order, and asking the Vice Chairman if he will open us with the intention.
Please pray with me. Most gracious heavenly Father. Wonderful community. Take the men. Please, our in the first responders.
Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. To the republic. God is the law. For all.
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of Commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the previous meeting, October third, in your packet. Had a chance to review them, then I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Then a second.
Any questions? All favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. Johnson, changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration, we have two items that we've had Commissioner request to move from the consent agenda to the debate agenda. Those items are H one G, which is a software agreement with Clarity, and then H two A, which is the award bid for fleet services, HVAC improvements. Those have been moved to the debate agenda for your approval.
Under special recognitions, I know Commissioner Couch has a presentation she wants to give to our Columbia County Parks and Rec and Events.
Jason. I'll get on both sides. Perfect.
Last week in Dallas, Texas, Columbia County Parks Recreation and Events received the prestigious national accreditation from the Commission for Accreditation of Park and Recreation Agency, CAPRA. This recognition confirms that Columbia County's Parks and Recreation Department is operating according to the national standards of excellence, demonstrating its commitment to providing top-quality service and amenities to the community. CAPRA accreditation serves as a validation of Columbia County Parks Recreation and Events' commitment to excellence and continuous improvement. The accreditation affirms Columbia County's compliance with the best practices of operational management and quality assurance at the national level. Moreover, it's a valuable measure of the quality of the department's operation, management, and service to the community. With only one percent of eligible park and recreation agencies accredited, this achievement puts Columbia County in good company with others at the elite level throughout the country. There are currently only one hundred ninety-three accredited agencies nationwide, and only fourteen accredited agencies in there. Congratulations.
Yeah, so this achievement is only possible because of the people we have standing up here. Unfortunately, we don't have all of our folks tonight. Most of them are out working programs actually tonight, so I appreciate y'all coming, the ones that could. The reason we got this is because we have great people who love their jobs, and that reflects in what they do and the services they provide. And that's been a really good formula for us, and I couldn't be more proud of this department and the job that they've done. Typically, this is an eighteen-month process to get this accreditation. We set some pretty aggressive goals. We wanted it to be done by the end of this year, and it took us eight months to do it. That's a testament to Dennis Hodges and his leadership, really. He kind of headed up this whole process, put the teams together. There's a hundred and fifty-three national standards that we had to meet and show, illustrate how we meet those goals. So also, I just want to say that I consider this a countywide recognition. We could not do what we do every day without the support of administration and the Commission and other departments and divisions, who also helped us with the application process, because it spans well beyond what we just do in Parks and Recreation. So, thank you.
Turn sideways and squeeze. John, do you know how many there are? You said one hundred ninety-three are qualified. How many are there, period? Thousands? Right, but then out of...
All local governments?
No, I'm asking that you know the number.
How many rec departments are there?
We're talking...
There's over thirty thousand counties in the country, and then if you add all the cities on top of that, you're probably up in the twenty-something, thirty-something thousand. Not all those have recreation apartments, but I would consider it being the tens of thousands, and there are a hundred and ninety-three out of tens of thousands.
And that also includes military bases and their operations, too.
Yeah, it's a great... I just couldn't be more proud of John and his team.
Absolutely.
We set forth last year at our Division Directors Retreat, we actually talked about, you know, what can we do to bring recognition to Columbia County? We're already doing good things, but how can we get recognized for that? And this was one of the things that John and his team latched on to and said, well, you know, it's an aggressive thing, but CAPRA accreditation would be something that would be a good, something good for Columbia County to get, and I feel like we qualify for it. So they went after it, and they got it, and they got it done in record time. It's just a testament to how good things are really running here with John and his team, and like you said, the rest of the county offices as well. This is going to be the first of many, because we challenged all divisions to do similar things.
Nice.
But John and his team were one of the first ones to bring home the big prize.
How often do you need to recertify, like every five years or ten years?
Every five years. We'll go for recertification in twenty-eight.
And they were. Of us are all.
Working so we can play.
That's right.
We're out there making all these.
It was very flattering for me to hear from the people that were actually coming in and doing the accreditation, how impressed they were with Columbia County and our operations, and our facilities and everything that we had. And these were, you know, some of these people from much larger agencies, been doing this for a long time, wanted to take some of the things that we're doing back to their agencies, and they were the ones coming in to evaluate us. So again, I think it's a testament to our team and how well they operate.
Good work, John. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. This has, or each item on this agenda has been through the necessary committees and received the required votes to be placed on the consent agenda. So if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to approve all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda with these items that got... Second.
Any questions? All favor raise your right hand. Motion carries on to the debate agenda. Commissioner Malira, I believe you're up.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to postpone the first reading of Resolution Number twenty-three dash fifty-one to amend the fee schedule for the Columbia County Health Department environmental fees until the second meeting. First. Second.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Send it back for them to...
Yeah, there's a few items on the fee schedule I'd like for them to revisit some, and I always hate to say that we don't charge enough for some things, but there are some items that I feel like was not enough to even justify, to cover the cost of going to the location. Back, and I just want to be sure that we're getting our costs covered, not subsidizing any particular item, whether it be septic tanks or inspection fees. Want to be sure it's covered, so when we get ready to do our budget for next year, we're...
It's a state function. Yes, sir. I'm not sure, I couldn't tell you how they're paid, but it's a state function, you're just required by law to approve their fees.
Any questions? Motion on the floor to table it till the...
We first.
First, all favor raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-three dash fifty-two, and to give authorization to the county manager and the broadband manager to sign the indefeasible right of use agreements. Second.
So this is a situation where the Commission has already approved a master services agreement with a particular company that we may do broadband work with, and we already have the terms of those agreement in place, but if they want to buy or lease an additional strand of fiber, currently, we're bringing those back to the board individually because of the speed of business. Think about if you called Comcast now and you said, I want to sign up for service, and they said, well, it's going to be six weeks before we can get you service. That's typically what we're running into. What we're asking for here is the authorization to have the broadband manager to be able to negotiate that and to sign that right of use agreement, and then also, it would be in concert with the county manager's office, so it would require me or one of the deputy county managers to also sign it. And again, this is for revenue. We're not spending any county money. You're not authorizing us to spend anything. You're only authorizing us to collect it on behalf of the county. And then obviously, we could do like we do with the temporary alcohol permits. We'll bring those back to the Board of Commissioners to allow you to review the ones that have been accepted, so everything is above board. You can see everything, all the transactions that are taking place.
Motion second on the floor, all favor raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the software agreement with Clarity Cloud, Inc., and implementation services agreement with Unisys Corporation for permitting and licensing solutions in the amount of nine hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars and ninety-two. Second.
This is a software package that we have been looking at for about a year now, maybe a little longer than a year. Currently, we're using a product made by the Tyler Group. They have not made any significant updates to the program we're using since two thousand and seven. Actually bought some other companies to try to fill that gap. However, we're not satisfied with the performance. Have put out RFP. We did spend about a year going through two of this RFP. We did have a group of people that consisted of different departments, such as Planterview, Planning, Stormwater Compliance, Water Utility, Traffic Engineering, Engineering, sorry, Business License, Building Standards, a big group. So this software package would work with all those folks, basically a tracking software. When you apply for a permit, this is the software we would use to process that permit. Front-facing side that the user, the citizen, can actually apply for a permit over their cellphone on a computer. It's got some software, some issues, got some systems built in the software that prevents you from applying for things that you're not eligible for. For example, a commercial building permit on a residential lot kind of streamlines the application process, definitely streamlines our review process. It's live, so you're the applicant, you make an application. As it's being reviewed by different departments, you can see those updates in real time, very open for the public to look at it, applicants to look at it. Makes it very easy for apartment managers, for directors, for y'all, to look at reports anytime you want to see it. So if you get a question about a project, you can very simply look at it on your phone. It gives you all the details. You'll know exactly where we are in the process. Very, very thorough software. Really excited about this. Does have a large implementation price to it, nine hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars and two cents. It leaves about a fourteen-month process to get the software implemented, have it functional. No, I lie. This one, I believe, we're supposed to have up by June of next year, so seven-month process. I'll take any questions you have about it.
Difference? One point two million dollars is... Or two? What the other?
We did bring these folks in for multiple rounds of interviews. Staff went through interviews, then I believe department directors went through interviews, then administration with this interview process. Look at the actual scoring system. Unisys scored the best on the technical side of it, the actual process of working through this. Whereas the Sages Network scored a three ninety, so more than twenty-five percent less than the one we're... Did they have a system that would work? Yes, it would work, but the system we have now would probably continue to work. However, it doesn't provide some of the features we want.
Do or what we're doing now?
That's right.
Also, for... Following.
Good, yes, sir. However, you would lose some of the abilities we would have with Unisys system. I'm going to use their names, that way we're not confusing one another. So Unisys system, if you, for example, called and said, Matt, I want to know every bathtub dealer in Columbia County that applied for a permit through these months, that's a simple report that we could pull up instantly. Whereas the Sages Network, that friendly use of creating custom reports, you could probably get it done eventually, but it'd probably get them involved, whereas the Unisys, really a query-based, you can put in all the details you want, and it spits out exactly what you're looking for. We also found with Unisys, we had a really good support staff help you through issues like that, whereas the Sages, every time we had this meeting, it was the same person. We had no support with them. We felt it was a one-man show. That kind of scared us. We've been down that road before with software. We had a one-man show, and eventually that man got tired of working, and our software was no longer supported. We still have the software, but we have no support. We can do nothing with it, other than keep it as it is now. Really feel that the Unisys system was a much friendlier system, a forward-facing system for the public to see, a lot easier to navigate. The Sages Network system, some of the stuff, yes, could do all the stuff, no. It definitely couldn't do all the stuff we wanted to do. Could we make it?
Add-ons.
Add-on. Yeah, right. Tended windows.
Whatever.
Gotcha. It... It would, it could probably do most of the stuff we wanted, however, couldn't grow into that software, if that makes sense. The software is basically what you get is what you get, whereas the Unis, we feel we could grow into it, we can keep adding to it, of expanding our use of it. Sages is pretty much what it is, as an engineer.
Because it's a one-man show.
That's the way it felt. That's the way it came across to staff. That's the way everybody saw it. We never met anybody other than the one man. He had nobody else to answer questions. Here, I'm an engineer, I can talk freely about engineers. He was an engineer. He said, I've got a problem, here's my solution.
He did.
Owned the company, developed the software, sold it. He's got it out there, people are using it. However, the Unisys system, you could tell with software developers, where people said, here's my problem, they develop software that solve problems, whereas engineers said, I have a problem, here's my solution. Sold his solution. Kind of customizes it for individuals.
Are the add-ons that you're talking about included?
I say add-ons. No, sir. This is our price here. When I say add-ons, I would say things that we're not currently doing today, the system has capabilities of doing, we can grow into those capabilities.
And it's included in them.
Included in the price, yeah. I apologize for not making that clear.
If I can add, too, that I did sit through these demonstrations. I let the staff go through and look at everything, let them score them. I didn't even look at the scores to begin with. I set through the presentations of the top three or two?
I think we brought you the two, top two.
Top two. It seemed like a thousand. But I sent through those two presentations, and I can tell you that I was not comfortable with... So I was comfortable with Unisys, it being forward-facing, thinking Columbia County could use that. It's up to Columbia County standards, so to speak. The other one, while it was fine, it just didn't seem like it was up to our standards. It was clunky, it wasn't forward-facing, you had to go out of a screen and go back into a screen. It just seemed like it was going to be too cumbersome, and if we spend this amount of money on software for the public to be able to use this, and this is the reason we did this. So again, staff actually went, we were working with, started with our Development Services Director, three or four years ago, we started looking at this, saying, hey, look, we need a way for the public, for the developers, for the applicants, for the homeowners, to be able to track their permits through this process, and we need something forward-facing. And I think had we gone with the other one that is not being recommended here, I don't think the public would have been happy with that. I think they would have gotten frustrated with the software, and I think they probably wouldn't use it, so it probably would have been a waste. I was frustrated with it in the demonstration. So I feel like we recommended the best one, and to the Vice Chair's point, there is a huge gap here. That goes back to our RFP grading process. Many years ago, the Board of Commissioners, when you put, I say you, I'm going to say you speaking as the Board of Commissioners, and I don't think any of you were on the board then, but when the Board of Commissioners at that time did our RFP process and did the scoring for that, the board at that time wanted cost to be the determining factor on every single thing, even if it was, even if you're comparing apples to oranges. So so many times, we have these situations where the scores are very skewed, because the technical score is extremely high, but the cost score may make somebody a winner or a loser, because it gives so much weight to that side of it, to the cost side of it. I would argue in RFP that cost shouldn't be that much. I mean, I think at the end of the day, you get to decide whether or not we purchase it. I think we ought to be buying what we need, and then if we can afford it, we do, and if we can't, we reject it. So it may be something we want to go back and look at, if this board's interested in reviewing that process. It's not a, I have not been comfortable with our RFP process for many years, but that's what the board decided at that time, and obviously, when the board decides something, we march on with it. But that's to your point, Mr. Vice Chair, that's why it's so skewed, because you had one that was so less expensive that, and I hate to use the old car comparison, I don't want to say the Cadillac, because I don't think, you know, we're getting the one that the county needs, but think about, you know, if your family really needed an SUV, because you have four kids and you really needed an SUV, but all you could afford was a two-seater economy car. I think that's what we have here, is the same kind of situation.
So I don't want to get old either, but we have, I've been here day one. Very conservative.
Absolutely.
Looked at every dollar that we scrutinize.
Sure.
Thought to finish. Get away from that, because we're fat and sassy, I don't want to...
Right. Well, I can assure you...
Make sure that dollar focus.
And I appreciate that. I can assure you that that's been my marching orders, and you don't, nothing gets to this board that has not been scrutinized because of cost, probably a lot more than you realize. We scrutinize it a lot, and a lot of times reject it before it even gets to this level.
Well, I don't mind being called sassy, but don't call me fat. But...
Best shit of your life, I've heard.
Point taken.
But I agree with your assessment and concerns. That said, the last thing I want us to do is go down the path of a, call it a one-man show, whatever you want to call it, there has to be support. At an app, we had something that we paid for and was a one-man operation, and we were doing it, and then we lost it. So it's going to be all it can be. You have to have the backup, so...
Out of technology. All are, or in my mind, technology. I just don't, I just don't...
Same here.
Testing.
Any more questions, comments, or seat heaters or vibrators? There's a motion second on the floor, all favor raise your right hand. Bought software. What?
Are you opposed?
I'm not opposed.
Oh, all against.
Stain?
Alrighty. I believe we're going to you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, thank you. This is file RZ two-three one oh dash oh one. I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from M one to R eight, property located at tax map zero-two-nine, parcel zero-one-eight C.
Second.
His request to rezone from an industrial zoning to a residential agricultural zoning, so this is a good move, we feel. If I'm not mistaken, this was, this is for a mother who's moving back home closer to her family, so...
Good. Questions? Can I raise your right hand? Omar, come on.
Next item, sir. It's file RZ two-three one zero oh two. I make a motion to approve the request for a conditional use for indoor animal care for property located at tax map zero-seven-eight, parcel three-four-zero, subject to the condition enumerated in the October fifth, two thousand twenty-three, planning commission report.
Request to have the conditional use applied for this property that has M one zoning to allow for indoor animal care. They're looking to do animal grooming. Condition requires a lint hair interceptor be installed at the drains in the, staff has recommended approval.
Questions? All favor raise your right hand.
Next item, file RZ two-three one zero zero three. I make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision for property located at tax map zero-six-one, parcel two-one-one-seven, to add a conditional use for retail packaged sales of distilled spirits for off-premise consumption.
This is a rezoning to allow a conditional use for the distilled spirits off-premise consumption. This does meet all of our distance requirements that are set forth in our updated requirements in our code. It was a package store in this area many years ago, and they're going back to it.
Oh, is Dollar General this becoming a package store?
No, no, sir. That's just, Dollar General's close to it, our store is actually here. That's just giving you a site map of what's there.
Okay. Questions, comments? Motion second on the floor, all favor raise your right hand. Motion carries.
This is an item that we moved from consent to here. I make a motion to award the bid in contract to Gomek, Inc., for fleet services, HVAC improvements project in the amount of a million, sixty-six thousand, one hundred eighty dollars.
A lot of air.
Yeah, you move this, please.
Bitter.
One bidder and $1 billion. How they did?
People, did they not respond?
Yes, we sent it out. We, of course, we're required by law to advertise on the state website, which was done. We asked our engineer to reach out to all of his contacts. He sent out...
Locally, we reached out to people.
And we received one bidder. We actually had one person show up to the pre-con, I mean, the pre-bid, so...
We're seeing more and more of this. We're actually seeing less numbers of bidders than we have seen historically. It just kind of depends on the project, but we're seeing more and more of this. And as Mr. Lacher said, we're required by law to bid it. So we went through the proper process. We went through the website. We put it out the way we were supposed to. We got one bid.
It's just hard to believe. Project this size, local business, folks didn't bid.
Well, they're, a lot of them are just busy from construction, and a million dollars isn't what it used to be. Five, 10 years ago, a million dollars was a lot of money, and it still is a lot of money, but it's not, it's not as comprehensive, as long as...
I agree it puzzles me to have one bid, but I am, want to take a little caution. If we rebid it, do we lose, does it go up on us?
Absolutely.
That's my only question, but I do agree with the, one bid is mighty unusual.
Historically, that's what's happened, Commissioner Skinner?
Recently, in our most recent bids, everything we've rejected and brought back has gone up. That's my concern.
We have not had one that has gone...
By losing the million, because this is a good company. We're all familiar with the company.
Without a doubt, they're a good company.
Right.
No, I'd hate to think it was $950,000. Do not know.
Well, you do know it because nobody else wanted it. Not really, no. And the longer you wait, the higher it goes. I mean, there's gonna be fluctuations in things like lumber, for example, has little fluctuations, but it's still up. Inflation is just hitting, and their labor is not getting any easier to come by. So the longer you wait, I mean, I would bet if you postponed this and rebid it, it's going up. And you still might not get anybody else. The people who didn't want to bid it the first time are not probably coming back. Take a second bite.
Can anybody bid it? They have to be on the list?
Anybody that's, anybody that's certified and can bond it. The big thing is bonding as well. They have to be able to go out and get a performance bond to bid us. So if they don't want anybody looking at their books, they don't have an insurance company that's willing to bond them. So there might be people out there. They just don't meet our requirements. Only other thing I would throw in for your consideration, it's gonna take about 150 days to do this, but if we start now, we should have it working for summer. If not, we're probably gonna miss summer, and those guys are gonna work through the heat again. Something to consider.
What was the bid date on this? It was probably in the last record.
We opened it two weeks ago, I believe it was.
Okay.
Three weeks ago.
Okay.
What's the lead time on the equipment? They have to, is it a couple of months to get the equipment?
I think so. They've got to do some structural work before they can start setting the equipment. They do a lot of electrical work. Those are big shops. We got to get power that's not existing already. So I want to say the lead time was probably three to four months. It wasn't awful.
If you postpone this, that's...
Oh, yeah, right.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna order it until you send a contract, so...
Any other questions or comments? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion, the eyes have it. I expect you to vote that way when we talk about trucks next time.
Mowers.
Mowers and trucks.
Mr. Chairman, you beat the trucks, too. So, yes.
Oh, gosh. Any legal matters?
Any legal matters.
Praise the Lord. How about, no requests for review by committee? Any public comments or participation? Public? One, two. Drew, you got anything to say? Executive session, I believe we have two issues we can deal with right here and now. Vice Chairman Richardson?
Second.
Didn't start a long way to go. 10% through.
Everybody knows what it's for. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Buying the whole house?
Yes. We actually have already bought the house. Part of the, we're using federal dollars for the acquisition part, where we have to follow federal rules. One of the rules is we have to make these folks whole. Because we're buying their house, we have to, have to find a house that's compatible or comparable to have, and we have to cover any difference in cost. So already paid $219 for the original house and property. $59, $759, $86 makes up the difference in closing cost, higher interest rates on mortgage payments, higher cost of housing. So all that makes these folks whole. We made them move.
Actually, it was four...
Eighty-ish.
Correct.
Four, yeah, wow.
Wow.
Do have a few. We're working all those early. That's, we have the consultant working on all those right now because it does take time to get those folks relocated, find new homes, get through the closing process. We're working those hard and early.
Was there a second?
Yeah.
I didn't hear one.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. That includes most of the business except for one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned.